First mid-century community created for African Americans to seek protection with a historic overlay. And also, they accomplished this task with the community and their council member, I believe she's here as well, during COVID. And if you all remember, we, a lot of us were absent in terms of how we could respond. So this was a big deal for that to happen because they had community meetings virtually. They obtained funding to install neighborhood signs, and they repeatedly fought inappropriate development since the 1964. Without these efforts, the neighborhood would not likely still exist. In 1964, they created the Haynes Heights Community Civic League to fight against a zone change to allow for industrial uses. In 1969, they fought against a commercial community center with low-income housing. In 1973, they fought again a BZA request for a nearby landfill. In 1988, they fought against an apartment complex entrance in the neighborhood. And twice, they defeated a rezoning application for a procedure, excuse me, for a produce warehouse. In the 2000s, they fought a group home and a 200-unit apartment complex, among others, and developed a neighborhood association in 2010. So that's very commendable to the community in how many years you have diligently seeked this type of preservation for your neighborhood. Summary of that is the developed by and for African Americans during the Jim Crow era, the Haynes Heights neighborhood was populated by doctors, lawyers, and educators, among others. Haynes Heights afforded members of the Black community the type of neighborhood that they envisioned for themselves and their families, one that was not available to them in established neighborhoods of segregated Nashville. Leaders within Nashville's Black communities took notice of the subdivision and noted it as a sign of progress. They called the area "the clean outskirts of the city" and believed that the private financial backing of the development showed how African Americans had an appreciation for finer living conditions, the same as other racial groups. So we would invite the community, also council member, to come forward, and we will be able to give you this recognition. And also, as I stand here, to the commissioners, they want to have pictures, so afterwards, please come forward, or you can come now.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself. I'm Sarah Miller-Ponty, and I'm the president of Haynes Heights, the leader of the association.
Eric, good lord, member of ours.
Thank you, thank you. And so, we are very happy and very proud to give this to you today. You're the very first of our leadership commissioners. Would you like to say something?
We very much appreciate this honor that you've bestowed on us, and we hope that we can continue to fulfill the responsibility of preserving our neighborhood. We work very hard with all the development around this, doing anything about our area, which can be rained, but we're doing our best to maintain the quality of life that we have to provide for the people.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you. Remember anything? You've done also your due diligence on this, so we'd like to hear from you as well.
I always enjoy working with the folks who live in Haynes Heights. It is a historic and dear neighborhood that is a vital part of the history of District Two. One of my goals, you know, as council member, in doing smart development, is, you know, growing the area economically, but preserving our historic and established neighborhood as a Haynes Heights. It's definitely one of those neighborhoods I'm proud to stand up here and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Also want to thank one of our commissioners on the Metro historic commission, Commissioner Jim Hubler. Thank you for being here with us as well. For each case, there'll be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve two minutes as a rebuttal. We ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes unless they have previously requested it in writing for five minutes as a representative of a group or organization. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County vis statutory writ of certiorari. You're advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. Okay, our first next on the agenda is adoption of the April 19, 2023 minutes. Any questions, or is there a motion?
There's no doubt.
Okay. Okay. Robin, they didn't have their mics on, so it's Commissioner Cotton made the motion and Vice Chair seconded. All in favor? Okay. Seeing none opposed, that motion passes. And agenda changes, Ms. Ziegler?
So number 12, which is 926 Bradford Avenue, is revised for an administrative permit, so it's off the agenda altogether. 16 and 26 are removed, request to defer, and number 28 is a request to defer. And we just heard that number, I think it's 15, 13, for 1503 Dallas, there's a request to remove that from consent, but you'll get to that shortly. So the ones that are removed from the agenda altogether are number 12, number 16, number 26, and number 28.
Okay, any questions? So there's a motion to approve the agenda and under the revisions.
Madam Chair, move to approve the revised agenda.
Thank you. Second? Second. Commissioner Mahal, you got that? Okay, thank you. Yeah. All right? All in favor? Okay, seeing none opposed, that motion passes. Okay, consent?
All right, sorry about that. So as notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the public or the commission requests the item to be removed from the consent agenda. Any items removed from the consent agenda will be heard at the end of the agenda. So if there's an item that you're here for that you would like to have removed, please wait until I read that item and then raise your hand so that we will make sure to remove it.
Melissa, I'll try to track that.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the first is the administrative permits issued for the prior month. 1615 Eastland Avenue, new construction of an addition. 1118 Douglas Avenue, new construction of an addition with a setback determination. 111 Lindsay Park Drive, new construction of an addition and outbuilding. 204 North 18th Street, new construction of an addition. 926 Montrose Avenue, an addition. 931 South Douglas Avenue, an addition and an outbuilding. The next item, 1503 Dallas Avenue, has been requested to be removed, so we already have that removed.
And so that will go to the end of the agenda?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. 3002 Belmont Boulevard, an addition and an outbuilding. 1304 Ashwood Avenue, new construction of an addition and an outbuilding with a setback determination. 1300 Third Avenue North, new construction of an addition. 111 Westover Avenue, an addition and an outbuilding. 128 Blackburn Avenue, partial demolition, roof replacement. And 4211 Park Avenue, an addition with partial demolition. So staff has reviewed these projects against their applicable design guidelines and found them to meet those design guidelines and recommends approval of the items on the consent agenda with the applicable conditions, finding that they meet their respective overlays.
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions? Motion?
Commissioner Cotton?
Second. Commissioner Johnson? Seconded. All in favor? None opposed? And that motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, so we add one violation today is 300 Broadway. This is a circa 1914 structure located in the Broadway overlay. So there's currently two components with this violation. One is a trellis structure. Originally, this was a two-part, I did, two separate entities per se. That at some point was enlarged and they were connected without staff review and without staff permits. It's currently within the step back and does not meet the guidelines. The second element is on my right is an addition. This was constructed facing the Third Avenue side and was added on to a previously approved addition. Just for a little context, the rooftop addition was approved by the commission back in 2016. It was heard both at the August and the September meeting, and awning was proposed in both cases, but the commission, as part of their approval, made a, said that the awning had to be removed, could not be part of the application. When staff received the revised plans, the awning was removed. This addition is in the same general location as a previously denied addition or awning. So there's two issues with this project and these two elements. One is materials. The roofing structure of that trellis item are metal slats. The roofing material of the addition is a canvas-type material. Staff finds that this does not meet the guidelines because it's something that you don't see historically. And then both are also within the setbacks, or step backs in this case. The trellis system is currently about 5'7" from the Broadway facade. On Broadway, all additions must be a minimum of 30 feet from the front facade, so it's obviously well within that setback. Unfortunately, the item also cannot be moved back because the addition as constructed, the approved addition that is, is at 30'1", so if you move the trellis back, it's still not within that step back. The addition facing Third Avenue is currently at about 6'9" based on the plans that staff received. Same situation, guidelines say that must be a minimum of 20 feet from this side secondary elevation in this case, since it is a corner property. So it's obviously not meeting those guidelines either. And as I previously stated, commission denied an awning in similar space previously for this property. So with that, staff recommends removal of the two additions within 60 days of the commission's decision, finding that they do not meet Section 2, 3I2 of the guidelines for setbacks and Section 3G1 for materials. Got any questions?
Thanks, Melissa. I mean, Kelly, you might come back to you.
I believe the applicant is here as well.
Okay. Advocate.
Good afternoon, everyone. Kwan Pooh with Holland and I, 511 Union Street, Suite 2700. Certainly appreciate your time today. I don't know if there's anybody in opposition, but we would like to request two minutes of our time for rebuttal purposes. So I want to give a little bit of a roadmap of kind of where we want to go. You know, there's a letter that's in your packet that really outlines this in greater detail, but it really hits four basic points as to why this awning should be allowed. One, awnings historically are allowed within the Broadway Historic District. And their locate, depending upon their location, they were found to be appropriate. Two, awning, this awning is located on a nonhistoric portion of the building, and under the design guidelines, additions to nonhistoric buildings has a different sort of level of scrutiny and review based upon the guidelines. Third, and maybe most importantly, the awning is not visible from the right-of-way. If you look at the design guidelines and what the commission has purview or items that are viewable from the standard right-of-way. And then fourth, under the zoning code, awnings are allowed as a permissible setback obstruction. And I think that's principally sort of what is at an issue here. So starting off on page 35 of the design guidelines, what it says is that awnings were historically common in the Broadway Historic District for storefronts and upper facade windows. And so if you see, hang on one second, I think there was supposed to be a presentation. Okay, oh, perfect. As you can see, that's that first bullet point there that talks about, excuse me, the bullet point over to the right under rehabilitation, it talks about awnings. But what it says is that historically, awnings were allowed in the Historic District and dependent upon their location. As you look at the facade here, the awning is above an upper facade enclosure, which meets the spirit of where awnings were placed historically. It is a preferred placement because in this instance, it's certainly less significant as you're looking at the facade. You still see the prominent bank building, which was restored or preserved by our client, but then you see the addition, which was already set back from that front and side facade. The awning is attached to that location. Secondly, and as what I sort of alluded to, it's on a nonhistoric portion of the building. I think that if the applicant had come today and proposed the same awning for that lower facade, what we reserve or what we see as that historic bank building, it may not be appropriate, but the portion of the building that's at issue here is nonhistoric. And I see my time is running out, so I'll go as quickly as I can. Third, it's not visible from the public right-of-way. We've got Dave Plummer here from Centric who'll go into greater detail on that issue, but there was a visibility study that was conducted. And if you're standing on Broadway and if you're standing on Third Avenue, you're not able to see that portion of the facade based upon the visibility study that we have done, which is sort of the purpose of having that setback requirement. And that's the purpose of having the design guidelines only be applicable for portions of the building that are visible from the right-of-way. You don't want to be able to see it, and so in this case, you're not allowed to see or you can't view that awning from that upper facade. And then fourth, you'll see that the awnings under the zoning code is not considered a setback obstruction. It's similar to a fence or a retaining wall or other type of non-habitable structures that are allowed to protrude that allowable setback. And so this qualifies as that. There are some pictures here that sort of illustrate the, one of the standards that you're looking at for the awnings is what is the character of the neighborhood. And so we, these are pictures from other establishments that are there in the Broadway District. The first is Mellow Mushroom. You see what you have there is sort of a tent and umbrella structure. You know, these rooftops are going to be allowed. And so as we look at the pergola, this is the type of structure that's going to be replaced, that's clearly highly visible from the right-of-way. We think that it's probably certainly not historic, but certainly doesn't fit in as much as what we have here. When you look at the Jason Aldean structure, that is a side facade, a side facade that's almost flush with the side of that building. And so there's no setback there. And again, these pictures are taken from Broadway Avenue. Another example, you've got Luke Bryan, which is up towards the front, up towards the front, you see that canvas that is not 30 feet off of Broadway Avenue and certainly not off that secondary street. Similar whiskey river on Third Avenue, that addition has been built, again, maybe one or two feet off of the side facade. This is another picture of the front of Whiskey River and the adjacent property. And then finally, you see there on the right, more tents that would go in the place of the Historic District as well as another flush side rooftop addition. And I'm going to turn it over to David.
All right, I'm going to hit the button that turns this off, I'm guessing, but, oh, there we go. Very good. Howdy, all. I just wanted to talk about.
Please give your name.
Sorry, I'm David Plummer, Centric Architecture, and my address is 2507 Fairfax Avenue.
Thank you.
Thanks. So I'm an architect. I work a lot with Raymond Hospitality Properties. I was not the architect when this project was done, but helping them sort of analyze the situation. It's hard to tell on the screen, but I think you all have seen the attachments and are familiar. This, it's a diagram that just basically shows some of what Kwan was essentially communicating, which is the setback for structure for building additions is on Broadway, 30 feet back, 15 feet up on the side street, 20 feet back, 15 feet up. The building addition meant that. The challenges here are the awning on the side street, which is not a permanent part of the building. There was some implication that it was done without a permit, but in fact, all of that work was done legally. You can call Nashville Tent and Awning and add an awning to your building, and it doesn't trigger a building permit. And the pergola, which, as an architect, I will tell you, yes, it's absolutely visible from Broadway. It's a piece of furniture. They had umbrellas out there, and an umbrella blew off in a storm, and their insurer advised them that this is dangerous to have umbrellas on the roof with people down below, and you need to, that's not a good idea. So they put this in and they weighted it down, but it is furniture, even though it is visible. So the visibility thing, that's a question, but it's not a building addition. With respect to the comment about materials, I wasn't aware of that, but the guidelines do say, and I don't have it in front of me, I think it's G, low down on the page on the right, that opaque canvas is an appropriate material for awnings in the guidelines. So the awning's not visible, the awning doesn't damage the historic fabric of the building, and the awning is there for safety. There's a bar there, there are employees who work there, all of the appliances under the bar are plugged in, they're electrical, and after a rain, when there's puddles and stuff, it didn't make sense to the building owner to have employees standing in puddles and touching electrical appliances, so they wanted to cover it. And so that's why it's there.
Just to tell you, you're going under your, because you only have two minutes for rebuttal.
Yeah.
Thank you. You're not going to have two minutes for rebuttal?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ron Carrier. I'm Vice President of Operations for Raymond Hospitality Properties. We're located at 1 Gaylord Drive. Look, I'm going to be very brief here, and I just wanted to talk a little bit from a more of an operational perspective. When we opened the venue, we certainly had no nefarious intentions of violating anything. The outdoor bar there, which is where the awning is over, our bartenders were out there. We actually had three employees suffer dehydration, heat exhaustion, and heat stroke, and we were compelled to create an environment that's safer for our employees to work in, which is why the awning came to pass. We also have $40,000 worth of kitchen equipment out there, refrigeration and things like that, that we need to protect. After that, the guests started giving us the same comments. It's too hot, it's too windy, there's rain, this and that. We're trying to protect an area for our customers. We're a hospitality company, it's a hospitality silly. We all rely on tourism to come to this market. We rely on it for the revenue, which allows us to pay into the tax base for Davidson County. By not having these structures out there and these abilities to protect our guests, we limit the ability to generate revenue, which lessens tax base. There's a lot more I could go into, but ultimately, it's really a safety issue for the awnings for our employees, and it's a comfort issue for our guests to be able to utilize the space.
Right on, thank you. Okay, open public hearing. That's for this particular project. Yeah, no worries, no worries. I see none for public hearings, so I'll close public hearing. Commissioners?
I have a question, just because I'm a little bit confused here. And I think Mr. Plummer said that, I'm assuming here, so somebody correct me if I'm incorrect. I'm assuming that drawings were done for the awning, they were submitted to Metro Codes, and a permit was issued? Is that correct?
No, ma'am.
No, that is not correct.
Wait, since we've closed public hearing, Commissioner, are you asking for the applicant?
I'm asking a question. Am I allowed to?
Sure.
I'm asking that question. I was under the impression that Mr. Plummer said a permit was issued, so I'm just paraphrasing.
I believe what he said was that if you were to check at codes, there's no permit required for this kind of construction.
Okay, okay. Sorry, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just since we closed public hearing, just want to make sure that it's Commissioner's time to discuss, but if the commission wants to have specific answers, then we can do that as well.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a comment. I do appreciate Mr. Pooh's interpretation about awning. And so I checked our design guideline. So definition of awning is somewhat different from what currently existing on the roof structure. So under our design guideline, a definition of awning is a secondary covering attached to the exterior wall of a building without additional support and is located above window or entrance. It is typically metal flame covered in canvas. With the addition of columns or posts, an awning becomes a canopy. So the structure is one is not awning, and it has a post. So actually, from the picture, I see four posts. So it's literally not attached to the side of the building as typical awning should be. So I think calling that structure awning is bit of a stretch of interpretation. And so I gauge this as a structure coming into, within the, you know, setback area. So both structure are clearly within the setback area, within the 30-feet setback from the Broadway and within 20-feet setback in the side street. So therefore, I support staff recommendation. I acknowledge this is a violation of our design guideline.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Madam Chair, I visited the rooftop yesterday, and it's beautiful. It's beautiful. You've done a great job with the space. The canopy, that we're going to call it now, is, I couldn't move it, you know, so it can't be, as you said, wind coming by and everything, that won't be able to blow it down. I so appreciate Gaylord and what they do downtown, what they've done downtown, and but there is a, it's hard for me to believe that you didn't want to do this and then ask permission after the fact. It's, I've seen some of the tents. I looked at the other tents along the street, and they look like they're not permanent structures, so. And so I I gauge this as a structure coming into within the, you know, setback area. So both structure are clearly within the setback area, within the 30 feet setback from the Broadway and within 20 feet setback in the side street. So therefore, I support staff recommendation. I acknowledge this is a violation of our design guideline.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Madam Chair, I I visited the rooftop yesterday, and it's it's beautiful. It's beautiful. It's you've done a great job with the space. The canopy, that we're going to call it now, is is I couldn't move it, you know, so it can't be, as you said, wind coming by and everything, that won't be able to blow it down. I so appreciate Gaylord and what they do downtown, what they've done downtown and and but there is a a it's hard for me to believe that you didn't want to do this and then ask permission after the fact. It's it's I've seen some of the tents. I I looked at the other tents along the street, and they look like they're not permanent structures. So I'm going to have to say I support staff recommendations as well.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Based on based on Commissioner Johnson's analysis, I support her conclusion.
Okay.
And I support staff recommendation on this project.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Now, we we see it's not unusual to see, and we fully appreciate, like Commissioner Mayall said, what Ryman means to the city and and what the economic benefit of all this is. And and I certainly can understand and relate to staff working in an area like this. However, one of the things that we found is that we've got hard lines. You know, I have four-year-old granddaughter, and, you know, she will push right to the edge of the line, and that's sort of what Lower Broadway is epitomized with, and that that unfortunately, there's very little leeway on our part to be able to maintain the guidelines that have been adopted and approved down there. And yes, we we recognize the hardship and but but these guidelines were put in place for a reason, to try to protect that area and protect the character of it. And I do support staff recommendations. And based on that, we'll move for approval of this project, the staff recommendation approval of this project.
Vice Chair, made a motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Price. All in favor?
All in.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you, applicant, for coming before us.
The next case is 2505 Natchez Trace. The applicant proposes an addition to a historic house. The house at 2505 Natchez Trace is a circa 1930 one-and-one-half-story Tudor revival-style cottage that contributes to the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. The applicant brought an addition proposal for this house to the Metro Historic Zoning Commission in February of 2023. At the meeting, the MHZC voted to approve the addition with conditions. Following the February meeting, the applicant submitted revised drawings to respond to condition number four, which stated that the connector between the two side gabled roofs has a one-and-one-half-story form with an appropriate eve height, or that it be made narrower to reduce the perceived scale relative to the historic house. The applicant now asks for the entire Commission's review of their revised drawings in response to this condition. And since this addition remains largely unchanged, except for revisions to the connector piece, today I'll just focus on the on the change that's been made to the connector. The rear addition is composed of a side gabled portion, which the MHZC found to be appropriate at the February 2023 public hearing, and a connector piece between the original side gabled roof and the side gabled roof of the addition. While the connector is not taller than the original roof and is stepped in two feet or more from the side gabled walls of the historic house, the low-slope roof and lack of an eve give the connector a full two-story massing, which staff finds to be inappropriate for an addition to a one-and-one-half-story house. The applicant responded to the previously approved condition with revised plans, showing a connector with an increased inset on the right side second level that runs the full length of the connector. On this slide, the top image was the previous connector inset on the right side second level, and the bottom image is the revised version showing a full four a full four-foot inset that runs the full length of the connector. The inset on the left side second level highlighted on this slide has remained unchanged between the two proposals. It steps back four feet, four foot, five inches from the historic house on the second level, but then steps back out two two feet, five inches for the rest of the length of the connector. Staff finds that insetting the connector at least four feet for the full length of the connector on the left side second level, as has been done on the right side second level of the connector, could satisfy the previously approved condition. Staff recommends approval of the approval of the addition's revised connector element at 2505 Natchez Trace with the following condition, that the connector between the two side gabled roofs be inset at least four feet for the full length of the connector on the left side second level, as has been done on the right side second level, to reduce the perceived scale relative to the historic house. With this condition and with the other previously approved conditions, staff finds the project can meet the design guidelines. And I'm happy to take questions, and I believe the applicant is here as well.
Thank you, Joseph. Questions? Not yet.
Thanks.
My name is Jared Danford. My wife and I live at 2505 Natchez Trace. I was here several months ago, as noted, to request some relief from some of the recommendations for our addition. After your ruling, we went back to the drawing board and made some significant changes to maintain the footprint and not use up any more of our yard than was absolutely necessary. As you can see on page one of the handout, our home is a one-and-a-half-story form, and with a small version of a one-and-a-half-story form, the head height challenges that come with converting an attic or making an addition and the connection to that addition is very limiting when you want to maintain a small footprint. We've been working with our architect, and it come up with some solutions that were put before the staff. The reason that this, based on the recommendations of the staff, we worked through a few of the details and ultimately came to what we understood to be approval through a conversation with the vice chair. But there were, to our surprise, the vice chair felt that the south side remained problematic. The reason this request came as such a surprise and confused us was that multiple discussions with former staff, Sean Alexander, he felt the south side of the structure met the guidelines. As you can see on page two of the handout, the connector has stepped in four and a half feet. We return nine feet towards the rear of the property before stepping back out to the two-foot, which is considered to be the minimum requirement. And therefore, we understood, due to this being routinely approved, that this would be approvable. As it relates to the context of the street, I want you to note that we're over 80 feet from the sidewalk to where this condition occurs. We have tried to keep all of the addition as non-visible from the public right away as your guidelines continually suggest. The addition of this request is what we would like you to consider relief from. We feel as though we've satisfied the requirements of the guidelines through our set step in and the return of over nine feet. And as you can see in the picture provided, it is also very minimally visible from the public right away. If we are required to adhere to the staff's recommendation, we will incur additional costs and time, and we'll have to rework the plans again to maintain a small footprint. It's important to us to be good neighbors, and we've worked very diligently to do so. Thank you for your consideration. I would like to reserve any remaining time to answer questions.
Do we have any questions for him at the moment? Okay, we might come back. Thank you. Open public hearing? Closed public hearing?
Madam Chair, I'm having a little hard time on this one. So I went back to our February meeting, and I read again the staff recommendation and what we were agreed to or recommended to as a revision. So the February 15 meeting, staff said, staff recommend, that the connector is revised to have a one and one-half-story form with appearance eve height, or that it will be made narrower to reduce the perceived scale relative to the historic house. So looking at revised plan, I think they did that on one side. And I do agree with our vice chair's analysis, yes, the the other side remain unchanged. But reading the staff recommendation, I think their new revision fully meet, because we did not say each side has to fully set in the length of, you know, four feet on each side. If we were very clear on that request, yes, you know, they did not meet our recommendation. But our recommendation is somewhat not specific. Have to say, both side has to revise. We said connector need to be revised. So with that, I think the applicant met our recommendation and spirit, and also, you know, as provided by the applicant, where the widening section step up or wider section is 80 feet from the front of the house. So for that reason, since one side is fully met our recommendation, I'm kind of compelled applicant argument. And so I am kind of leaning towards accepting the design as is, but I will be interested here, other commissioners' opinion.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, for your analysis. I I think I'm I agree with you, and I also appreciate you going back and looking at the minutes from February. I didn't do that, but that's really, really good due diligence on your part, and I appreciate you doing that, because it it helps clarify the situation here. I want to thank the applicant for for continuing to work through this and bring in revised plans before us, and also to Vice Chair Stewart for your comments and and bringing it before the whole commission so that we can all talk this out, because it helps us to talk these kinds of things out for future cases that are going to be similar. So I'd rather us have somebody say, you know what, I'd rather bring it back, bring it back to the commission for a full discussion. That said, I also agree that the applicant did satisfy the or of our recommendation, the second part, by narrowing. Even though it's not setback the full four feet, I feel like a good effort was made, and I do understand the challenge of of adding usable, livable space to a one-and-a-half-story house. So I'm also persuaded to to accept the applicant design as presented to us.
Thank you, Commissioner.
If there are no other comments, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Go for it.
Okay. With respect to 2505 Natchez Trace, I move to approve the applicant revised drawings as presented, rather than the staff recommendation.
Commissioner Price has made a motion, and Commissioner Johnson has seconded that motion. All in favor of the motion? Seeing none opposed, that motion passes. Thank you, applicant.
The next case is 1915 18th Avenue South. The applicant proposes a rear addition to a historic house. The house at 1915 18th Avenue South is a circa 1920 cross-gable English cottage-style house. The house contributes to the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. The applicant proposes a rear addition to the existing house that meets all base zoning setbacks. The applicant brought an addition proposal for this house to the Metro Historic Zoning Commission in April of 2023. At the meeting, the MHZC voted to disapprove the addition. The applicant has since submitted revised drawings for the addition. In the revised proposal, the applicant has reduced the proposed height of the addition so that it is no longer taller than the historic house. However, the revised proposal still has full two full two-story massing across the entire addition, as was initially proposed. In this slide, last month's taller addition is shown on top, and the revised proposal is shown on the bottom of the slide for comparison. Staff recognizes that historic that the historic house has taller eve heights on the rear of the house than is typically seen on a one-and-one-half-story English cottage-style house. While these eve heights may allow for some for some more flexibility on eve heights on portions of the addition, staff finds that the full two full two-story massing across the entire addition is inappropriate for a one-and-one-half-story house. Staff recommends disapproval of the proposed addition, finding that the proposal does not meet sections 2B1A and B and 2B2F for height and scale, nor 2B2A for location of the design guidelines for Belmont Hillsborough. You also did receive some public comment as well that was provided, and I'm happy to take questions, and the applicant is here as well, if you have questions for them.
Thanks, Joseph.
Thanks.
Hello. Thank you all for having us here. My name is Mary Ellen Corran, and this is my husband, Cody Goodwin. You met him last time. I was unable to be here. So it's good to see you all again. So Cody and I actually met here in Nashville, and we were very happy to come back. I'm a physician here at Vanderbilt, trained elsewhere, and just got recruited back in 2021. As you know, the housing market changed a ton while I was gone over those four years, so we were very fortunate to be able to find this house. We moved into it in June of 2022. We lived in it for a couple months, and then in July of 2022, we actually set up a meeting with Joseph. Hi, Joseph. We met in person in July of 2022 and discussed what even we could do with the house, because as you saw from the pictures, you saw the front, which looks like a one-and-a-half, but the back is basically chopped off and is a full two-story. So after that meeting, we did get some email responses back from Joseph, which I can quote, where he said, I know I said in the meeting that it would need to be a max of 1.5 stories, but after seeing your photos of the rear, we find that something closer to a two-story form could work here. So that is what we went off of. And so we engaged with Michael Ward, based on the fact that he has done a ton of beautiful homes in our neighborhood, and we love, you know, keeping in style with the historic overlay and obviously abiding by all of the rules. We just love the neighborhood so much that we wanted to employ one of the premier architects of the area. So anyways, we went down that road route, assuming it was a two-story build based off that email from Joseph. So we were kind of surprised last time when the quote came back that it was now a 1.5-story. So we did abide by the recommendations from last time. The the footprint actually came in smaller, so currently, the addition is 1134 square feet. Our existing house is 1150, so we're actually within or less than the 100%. We decreased the height, so you can't see it from the from the road at all. And yeah, anyway.
Yeah. So also, the proposed build also only covers 28% of the lot, so we have a very small footprint to begin with. And so with everything that we kind of want to do for the house and an expanding family, including her father, who's a little bit older, and my family as well, we kind of want to preserve what's there within the historical house. And so if we we haven't submitted the interior plans, but we're preserving all of that so that because we essentially love that part of the house as well, but to get the livable space that we need, we need to kind of fully utilize all of the the square footage that we have available. And additionally, all of the ceiling heights on the second story are full ceiling heights as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Ward with Allard Ward Architects. Great to be back. So based on, we didn't really get a lot of, we really didn't get any comments last month. It was too big. So we, taking that into account, shortened the the roof line, pulled it down under ridge, we tightened up the footprint a little bit. And the other thing we did, we did change a lot of openings in an effort to kind of pull the scale down a little bit in terms of opening and massing. But as I pointed out, I mean, you can see from this drawing pretty clearly, this is not a a large house to begin with. So footprint is critical, and massing is critical as well to kind of get that square footage. There is no front porch on this house. There's nothing that sort of helps a usual house when you're doing footprint calculations. So we used every inch of it, and our porch has to be on the rear. I am happy to answer any other questions you might have about the project. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Still have a few minutes if you have rebuttal. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Can you just show us the picture again of the before and after? Or the revised? Yeah, just to be sure. We're looking at the same things.
I'll kick this off if that's okay. Thank you for coming back. I do acknowledge that this is some, it's not a totally unusual type of house with, from the street, looks like a one and a half story. From the rear, it looks like a two story. So I acknowledge the design challenge. We're frequently asked to allow two story additions on one story or one and a half story homes. So I hope you understand, you know, where we were coming from last week, especially with the additional ridge height that was originally proposed. I appreciate that the ridge height's been removed and it's now all uniform across the back and the reduced footprint. So with that, I'm open to consideration for this design based on the rear of the house and how it reads with the additional gable design that's been added in the back before you get to the back porch. I'd like to hear other commissioners. I know Vice Chair Stewart seemed to support the design last month. So I'd like to hear any comments that he might have and anyone else too.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do agree with Commissioner Price. I think this house is not only typical, you know, rear two story. Looking at the existing roof line, seems like literally chopped off. So it's really unique design. And I do appreciate applicant listen to our recommendation and reduce the footprint so it will be not double. And originally, this house is a really modest footprint. And but, you know, try to abide by our design guideline and it does not double or exceed the existing historic house. And also, I do appreciate the effort reducing the two feet, you know, roof line. So it will be equal to, you know, existing historic house. Considering those condition, I am persuaded by accept modified design. But again, I'll be interested to hear other commissioners as well.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You know, this is one of the most challenging house forms that I've seen. You know, typically, looking at the front elevation, you'd say no way to put two story addition on the back. But like Commissioner Johnson said, you know, the way the back is chopped off, it's full two story, as Joseph had alluded as well in the emails. You know, the addition is not any wider than the house. It's not any taller than the house. And based on the changes that have been made since last time, I feel comfortable in supporting this application.
Just like to make a motion.
Sure. So with respect to nineteen fifteen eighteenth Avenue South, I move for approval of this application.
There's a motion. There's a second. All in favor. Seeing none opposed, that motion passes. Thank you, applicant, for continuing to work this. Appreciate it. Looking forward to seeing the house.
Okay. Next up is fourteen oh one Gartland Avenue. It's a circa nineteen ten bungalow that contributes to the historic character of the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. The proposed application is to remove the existing wood siding on all facades of the house, replacing it with a smooth cement fiberboard last siding with a four inch reveal and without a beading detail to match the historic siding. Staff examined the siding and observed the siding to be old growth wood with a four inch reveal. Actually, I think it's a three inch. That was a mistake. A three inch reveal with a beaded detail. Staff finds that the siding on the South Fourteenth Street facade does not, does need substantial repair. Moisture and other weather has caused decay and spongy and split boards to an extent that a significant number of boards would need to be replaced. Although highly visible from the street, the majority of the siding on South Fourteenth Street requires replacement. While staff recommends approval of the siding replacement on this facade, staff recommends that a condition of approval be that the replacement siding have a reveal and beading detail that matches the existing siding. Staff did some brief research because the applicant is proposing just a typical smooth hardy plank siding without the beading detail. And it does seem like there aren't, we did not find in our research cement fiberboard manufacturers that have the three inch reveal with a beading detail. But you can, you know, cut and, you know, either install it in a manner that the overlap is such that you can get a three inch reveal or you can, you know, just cut the boards and shorten the board so you can get that three inch reveal. And there's also always the option of using a wood. We've had other applicants come before you who, when they've replaced their siding, have replaced it with wood because then you can customize it. So I'm just going to go through and show some pictures of the South Fourteenth Street facade. Okay. So moving on to the front facade. Staff finds that, well, I'm sorry, just before I move on, I will say that the applicant's also proposing to replace the siding on the rear facade, which staff, you know, can recommend approval of because typically someone might do an addition and then that whole rear facade's going anyways. And on that rear facade, we are okay with a kind of smooth four to seven inch, you know, siding reveal. So on the front facade, staff finds that the front facade, the siding is in good repair without major splits or moisture issues. Staff recommends that the siding on the front facade remain as is. Historic siding is a significant architectural features of the house and also contributes to the house's structural integrity. Since MHCC does not review the replacement of windows or roofing within Lachlan Springs East End, the siding is a primary material that the commission can deem should be retained in order to retain some historic fabric of the house. Another reason why staff recommends retention of the wood siding is because it is a durable material that cannot be replaced with new wood siding. Old growth wood tends to have tighter growth rings, making it denser and more durable than modern lumber, which is usually harvested from trees less than thirty years old. So again, just going to run through some photos of the front facade. And moving on to the right facade. Similarly, on the right facade, with the exception of a few boards, staff finds that the siding can be scraped and painted. There are some boards above the side bay and below the gable window that need to be replaced. There are a few others throughout the facade that are cracked. For these boards, staff recommends select replacement with boards salvaged from the South Fourteenth Street facade. And then finally, there is an extension at the rear of the house that has siding that doesn't match the siding on the rest of the house. Sandboard maps show that this was likely earlier porch. So, you know, it was enclosed at a later date and the siding there is likely later. For that reason, staff is recommending approval of this siding being removed or replaced on this portion that you see here. So I'll just summarize that because it's a long recommendation. Long story short is we are recommending approval of the replacement on the South Fourteenth Street facade. But we are recommending that a condition be that the siding on that facade replicate the reveal and beading detail that's currently there. On the rear and the addition, we are recommending approval of the proposed removal of that siding, but that siding can go back in a smooth hardy plank, seven inch, up to seven inch reveal. And on the front and the right side facade, we are recommending disapproval of removal of the siding. And the owners are here, if you have any.
Thank you, Melissa.
So those are all there. Perfect. Hi. My name is Tiffany Corsi. And sorry, I'm not used to speaking in front of a commission. My name's Tiffany Corsi and my husband and I live at fourteen oh one Gartland. My grandfather bought this house in nineteen forty seven. And so I have the unique ability to both be a unicorn and one that also is from East Nashville. So we call me a double unicorn because I get to stay there. We love this house. Obviously, I have a few slides and I'll tell you our thoughts. But our ultimate goal is to maintain the integrity of the house, to bring it back to life. We have lived there for about twelve years since. The family's always owned it and so we're back in it. And last year, we took ownership of it. And so here we are, wanting to bring it back. The siding that has to be replaced, there's no questions about that. Like, we're only asking to replace all of it so that we don't have multiple sidings on the house. If we could be here and just do nothing, I would rather keep all of the original siding on the house. This just shows a comparison. So you can see a little bit, the beading siding versus what it looks like as compared to our actual siding. There is a detail, but to my eye, it's a different detail. There is a, you can also see, as Melissa said, the reveal is different on the beaded siding. However, in the smooth siding, they do have the option for a four inch reveal. And really, what I love about the siding that looks different is that smaller wood, right? I understand the reveal is there or the detail is there. But to my eye, that is less significant of what it makes it stand out to the other houses. That is not mine. These are... Oh, okay. I see now. These are the, I'm with you. Our contractor, I'm going to skip through these and I'll come back. There were, okay. I'll just speak to it then. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's okay. These are all examples of houses our contractors done. The other pictures were really pictures just showing a little more of the detail that just looks different to me. And also, some of the specific areas of the house on the interior side that do have damage. So ultimately, I'm afraid you're going to have multiple, will have multiple sidings on the house. We're a really visible house in East Nashville. Unlike some houses that would be redoing their siding, we have two sides visible to the street. The fourteenth side, which we don't have any options on. That's just, it is what it is. And the front. And frankly, you can come see the house, the front is in beautiful condition. And it just, to me, retaining the beauty of the house is for it to have a consistent look across the board. And the other thing I would note is, and I think there's a picture. I know you guys don't do the interior of houses. But we have made some design decisions on the interior because it's important to us that we maintain the exterior look of the house. So this is the fourteenth side of the house. The back of our house is the kitchen. So that last window and the small window you see are all in our kitchen. Small window pantry, large window, just part of the kitchen. We made a design choice not to cover that window, not to make a request for any changes to that window. We're actually going to make just a tiny little bench seat and wrap some cabinets around the other sides. That's intentional because we don't want to change more than we have to, even though that is not the most efficient or effective flow of our kitchen. On the side of the house that neighbors another house, it is not all the wood, but it's a significant enough portion that we feel like it just, it will negatively impact the overall look of the home. And ultimately, it's, we're going to have to replace enough of it that it's not that much we're going to be able to save. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I really appreciate your love and affection for this house and being such great stewards of it. It's great to see a house like this come back to fully loved life and we appreciate that. One question from a technical standpoint. Is there sheathing underneath the siding that's on or is it directly on the studs?
It has never been replaced. So this is the hundred and twenty year old siding that it is. So I don't actually have any idea. I would assume there, I mean, the material was built late eighteen nineties. So, yeah.
Yeah. Both conditions are typical in homes like this. And the one thing I would recommend is when you do replace the siding is if there is no sheathing under there, do not allow any insulation to get against that outside wall so that you keep airflow. Because no matter what kind of siding you have up, there'll be some moisture, whether it's condensation or otherwise. And having insulation up against it can damage the entire structure.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. I love it too that you're carrying on from your family because I have a property like that too. And it's like, anyway, thank you. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Okay.
You know, I love this house. It's a beautiful house, beautiful structure. And having dealt with a lot of similar structures over the years, there is a difference in the look of existing siding versus the hardy plank and the smooth siding. It is, you know, it is available. I don't think the staff recommendation was specific about the bead detail that it matched exactly. Was that correct, that you just required a bead detail?
We would recommend a close match to it, something as close as possible. I mean, you may not be able to replicate it exactly, but something close to the beading detail. Yeah.
So I think you have some leeway on that. But even the hardy plank is, can be handled similar to wood. So, you know, even with the smooth, you can come in and route the edge and make a bead detail along that. You can, you know, I think the three inch reveal is important. I think that as I look through all this and through your presentation, I think the staff recommendation is right on point and I have to agree with the staff recommendation. Think retaining the front and the existing siding is really important to this.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Anyone else?
Thank you. This is a beautiful home and I have to say, I know it well. I walk by pretty often. My child goes to school up the street. So I'm familiar with it. And just to provide a little more context for y'all and whoever else might be watching, I think discussion about reviewing siding like this had been going on for a long time. And then a couple of years ago, I think it was Russell or Lily and somewhere in East Nashville, builder, developer, took all the siding off of a house and a windstorm came through and knocked the house down. So just some context of why we do this now. Because it has had real bad consequences in the past. That said, since we've started reviewing the removal and replacement of siding, I've been pretty consistent in doing, as Vice Chair just stated, to retain as much original as possible because I do think it's a character defining feature. In this case, I see that, I see the rub, like what the problem is in terms of not wanting all kinds of different siding all over the exterior. I would, and from a cost perspective, you would likely be better off doing selective removal as is recommended by the staff. So I have to say I'm torn on this one. With an acceptable replacement with a bead that somewhat replicates the original, if it's available, which it seems to be from the presentation, I might be persuaded to allow the applicant's request. But I'd like to hear from others too.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I did have one other comment. You mentioned wanting to keep the same siding all the way around. It's not a requirement of this, but the presentation mentioned a seven inch lap in the back and a three inch in the front. I just think it would be more consistent to have it three inches all the way around.
Okay. And if there are no other discussions, Commissioner?
So, go ahead.
I tend to agree a bit with Commissioner Price. I see both arguments on this particular project. But I think in the long run, what we're actually here for is the historical context of these homes. So if this makes any sense whatsoever. All of that being said, I think in the long run, I would have to agree. Even though I see both points and I'm a bit torn myself, I think I tend to agree with Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Commissioner. Would you like to make a motion, Commissioner?
I will make a motion as fourteen oh one Gartland Avenue that we concur with staff recommendation.
There's a motion? Is there a second? Second by Vice Chair. All in favor? Any opposed? You are opposed? Okay. We have one opposition by Commissioner Cotton. Okay. But the motion passes with quorum. Okay. Thank you.
The next case is ten oh four fifteenth Avenue South. The house at ten oh four fifteenth Avenue South is a contributing house in the Edgill Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. The English cottage style house at ten oh four fifteenth Avenue South The English Cottage style house at 1004 15th Avenue South was built in 1932. The house has been neglected for a number of years, suffering from accumulation of trash and general deterioration due to neglect. Because of this, the house has fallen into extreme disrepair. The applicant has provided three engineering reports and an inspection report. The reports explain that the house has significant deterioration of the roof, roof framing, exterior walls, foundation, and interior framing. The inspection report also details significant issues with the electrical, mechanical, and plumbing systems of the home. The deterioration of the structure can be attributed to water intrusion, rot, wood-destroying insects, and general neglect. It is also noted that the entire second level of the home is structurally unstable. The reports were in agreement that little of the historic house is salvageable. Staff recently visited the home and observed the issues discussed in the reports. General decay, mold growth, rot, and insect damage were evident throughout the house. The exterior envelope of the house has been compromised in multiple locations, exacerbating the overall deterioration of the structure. Staff also found that little of the historic house would be salvageable. The applicant has also provided a demolition estimate, cost of compliance estimate, purchase agreement information, and letter from an architect with their application. Based on the engineering reports, the home inspection report, and staff observation, the house at 1004 15th Avenue South appears to be so far deteriorated that any effort to restore the home would require a complete replacement of the foundation, replacement of most framing, and complete replacement of the roof structure. The necessary repairs will result in the loss of nearly all historic elements of the house, which would result in the house being a non-contributing building. The application was presented as an economic hardship request based on the fact that the building is historic. Staff finds the issue with this case not so much the cost of repairs, but the inability to repair. Staff recommends approval of demolition based on the inability to rehabilitate the building and the fact that all necessary repairs will result in a non-contributing building. And staff recommends approval of full demolition of the house, finding the demolition meets the design guidelines. I'm happy to take questions with the applicant here as well.
Thank you, Joseph. I will hold my comment until after applicate, and applicate, given their presentation, applicant? Okay, all right, thank you. Open public hearing? Close. Come forward. Please give your name and address.
Good afternoon. My name is Daryl Harvey. I'm the owner of the property. I live at 400 Highland Avenue in Spurano, Tennessee, 37167. And I wanted to address the property and how I came into the picture. So originally, I lived in the Edgill, on Edgill Avenue, and was walking my dog Pepper down the street and noticed this super ugly duckling of a house. And I do investment in real estate, and I'm fairly knowledgeable about what it takes to get a building back up to shape and whatnot. Anyway, I looked up the deed and found out that there were multiple estates involved that had ownership interest in the property. None of them had ever been probated. There were owners that were in several different states, and some were non-responsive, some were highly combative, and some were totally in agreement on selling the property. So I ended up consolidating the title, and through that, Chapter 7 bankruptcy was discovered where is the undisclosed asset. I notified the trustee here in Nashville, and they promptly commandeered the whole property and brought it into what's called a Rule 363 proceeding, where basically they take all of everybody's interests, consolidate them, go through the court process, and a judge determines what to do with the property. So during that time, I purchased ownership interests in 2020. It took approximately two years to get it fully adjudicated, which happened at the end of this past year. During that entire time, I was never able to step foot inside the house because of a disturbing the right, or disturbing the peace, so to speak. And I didn't want to go in without the permission of the other property owners. I didn't want to upset them. So immediately the day after I got the deed to the property, I had to get a locksmith to get entry, walked in, and it absolutely broke my heart. And on the outside, you could tell it was in really bad disrepair, but once you got inside, all hopes that I had, I actually wanted to live in this property. I wanted to fix it up and become a resident of that chill area again. And going in there and seeing a giant roof and a hole in the roof, and Tupperware totes full of rainwater that had been accumulating for years, had rotted through the roof, had rotted through the second floor, had rotted through the ground floor, mold, termite tubes going up to the attic, which I'd never seen, going up two stories and then up to the attic, and it's just been eating away for only, I don't know how long. But I subsequently met with Historic and brought them in to get their, get their perspective. And, you know, they could see exactly what I was seeing, and I asked, you know, for the proper steps to go through, and was advised on how to go. And I quickly, I got a structural engineering report, a home inspection report, and also cost estimates to fix up the house, which came in at about $650,000. That did not include windows, did not include cabinets or countertops. So based off of everything with the house, I would be several hundred thousand dollars underwater from current property values. I'm not a builder. I've done remodeling, but not nearly to this scale. And certainly, this is my first rodeo with Historic, so I understand that there are all sorts of regulations and whatnot, and it's very collaborative, which I can definitely appreciate. At that point in time, though, I knew I'm not the right guy. And so I started seeking out people who could, and I found these gentlemen here, and we collaborated and had a very long discussion about what the, what could be done. They have extensive knowledge in home renovations and building, and so I deferred to them and decided it's best for me to move on out of this, because I would be remiss to say that I am any, any form capable of tackling this project, which is what I can't do and what somebody else should be able to do. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
So you're no longer the owner?
I'm pending this.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Give me a week, and I'll let you know.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any more public comment? Okay? Close public hearing? Okay, I did go see this property. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. Your group was there. And definitely looking, and as you have read, the recommendation from staff, that they're right, spot on. There was absolutely years of neglect. I could barely walk in there. You know, historic features and the structural is beyond the preservation, preservation of those things, those items. Water infiltration was evident. So, you know, we're always very, very cautious and serious about not taking any kind of demolition. We take that seriously. And so with that, though, this is one of those properties that unfortunately we're going to lose. So I, as being the one that has seen it on site, of course, you all have read the recommendation, is that I would support the demolition.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for visiting the site and give us a report for how the property looked like. And I do appreciate a thorough report coming from not only one, but, you know, a couple engineers, and as well as appraisal, you know, report. So from all, the report is consistent. And one thing I really appreciate, Mr. Harvey, of saying how the property acquired and how the condition is become the condition today. Because one thing I really, kind of, my suspicious mind was, because, you know, historic property is kind of high value, so would be so sad to see somebody bought it and intentionally neglected. So I am really appreciative of that was not the case, and we don't want to see those kind of, you know, strange trends. So I really appreciate intention and, you know, history and sharing, Mr. Harvey sharing those. So, but I, after reading all the report, I think our staff analysis is right on, and after repair is not feasible, and so try to do repair so this structure will no longer meet historic guideline. So I will support staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
If you'll indulge me, I became a lawyer and not a veterinarian, because as a kid, I worked at the vet's office, and I didn't have the heart to mercifully put down a pet. And we sit here today, looking at a house that has served families well, and has been a beautiful home, but I'm afraid the merciful thing to do most likely is to let it go. So I would support the staff recommendation as well.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So, you know, you look at the pictures of what this house was at one point in time, and it does, it does break your heart, like the owner said. The one thing that I am totally shocked by is how many people tell me that they watch this proceeding. And just those people watching the proceeding, I would say that the only silver lining in this dark cloud is that it isn't a conservation overlay. So the house that replaces this one will need to come before historic review and be designed in a way that fits the character of the neighborhood. And so for all you out there that bemoan this coming down, at least the one that's coming in should be a great addition to the neighborhood, based on the protections that come from the design guidelines. So I support this, and with respect to 1004 15th Avenue South, I support the staff recommendation for a full demolition.
Thank you, Vice Chair. There's a second by Commissioner Cotton. All in favor of the motion? Okay? Any opposed? Seeing none? Okay, thank you. We look forward to reviewing the infill on this. Thank you. Thank you again.
Could I just say one thing, how much I appreciate what this gentleman did for the neighborhood? I think he, he did a great service to the neighborhood. And as a former trust officer for 40 years, I've seen situations like this, and I understand why this was neglected. It's not demolition by neglect, it's just the situation. And so I applaud your efforts and what you've done, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay? I'm sorry I didn't ask you for, you can just raise your hand there. Sorry, I didn't see the red light.
Next up, we have 2206 Ninth Avenue South. This is an application for construction of an addition that steps wider than the historic house and the selective demolition of an original window opening. The project meets the guidelines for an addition that steps wider, and staff recommends approval of that addition. The project includes an attached carport, which staff finds to be appropriate in this instance, given the irregular shape and small square footage of the lot. The final materials should be reviewed and approved. Overall, staff finds the project to meet the guidelines. The one issue involves changing original openings. The applicant proposes to alter this paired window to create a pair of French doors. The guidelines are clear that opening sizes should not be changed on front elevations or on side elevations forward of the midpoint, which this is. Staff recommends that the windows not be altered. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed addition with the following conditions: the paired window opening on the right side elevation should not be altered, HVAC and utility locations shall be approved, and materials should be approved. I know the owner is here and would like to speak. Do you have questions for me first?
Thank you, Jenny.
I'm Jennifer Bagwell. My address is 5031 Marchant Drive in Nashville. I'm actually the designer, and the owner is indeed here to answer questions. I just wanted to give a little information. So this is just a triangular lot. It's just been really a challenge to design on, and the owner would like to, the addition is for her to continue living there. We are looking at one level living, and right now she's climbing the steps up to the attic. So we're bringing down her primary bedroom and bringing up her laundry and adding some gathering space. And then, like you said, one's, one car carport, and the addition is going in where the existing carport is. It's a two-car carport. But it is extreme, it's just a perfect triangle. And so the amount of green space is going to be very important to the owner. And rather than having to go, like, through the carport and out to the remaining tiny triangle of backyard, what she'd like to do is add these, no wider than the windows that are there now, adding two doors that would allow access then to a little bit more substantial green space that is enclosed before her fence. And so that's why the request. I know normally this is not approved and not looked on favorably, but we are trying to access any green space she can get to. I will also point out, you could see in that picture that there was a fence that is around this property. It's a pretty tall one. And when you're walking by, you cannot, I know the window and door will look slightly different, but you cannot see into her backyard. And just because of where that alleyway is and its closeness, I, and fences are temporary, but I feel like somebody living there is always going to maintain a fence just to keep traffic basically out of your yard. So I think I've hit all the high points, so I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, I think we have none for the moment. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's April Days. I'm the owner there at 2206 Ninth Avenue South. I appreciate your, your time today. Just a couple of things, you know, I know that there's, there's always things that we have to abide by. There's rules, there's sets of rules, but I think I've been in that neighborhood for 14 years. I've been, came from Detroit, I've been here 23 years, and I've been in the 37212 area code and zip code and 37204 for these, all these years. And, you know, my plan is to stay, obviously, but I think, you know, we have to remember that times change, and the houses kind of have to change, too, within the set that you guys have allowed, but also that the house has to serve the people that they live in. And as Jennifer said, I'm, I'm trying to do this renovation in order to bring things down to a one-story level, so I'm not going up and down these stairs that I've been going up and down for all these years, but also just to maintain some green space. And on the side of the house that faces, I face Ninth Avenue South, but my other side of the house is all an alleyway, so it's not really seen by, you know, a right of way. And anyway, that's, that's really what I want, is to be able to go from the dining room out to a green space. But I appreciate, I appreciate your time and your thoughts on this. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Okay? Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Commissioners?
I will start. So I, I think I understand the lot is a rather unique lot. However, the, looking at the proposed addition, a design, I think there's a front door and then window. So applicant is asking the window by the front door to be another door. And then there's another door in the beginning of the, you know, addition, and then there's back door. So I understand this lot is rather unique, tight lot, but I think the addition door will serve the applicant to access to the green space where applicant want to, you know, address and get to without going to the back door. So for that reason, since this window is literally front of the house or by the, you know, front portion of the house, I think we need to abide by design guidelines. So for that reason, I tend to support staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I agree with Commissioner Johnson. I understand the homeowner's request. We not infrequently get requests like this for openings toward the front of the house, even, even on the front of the house, and routinely find ourselves hewing to what the letter of what the guidelines say, which in this case, I don't see how we can approve the applicant's request with regard to this window.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I agree with the previous commissioners. I also think that the distance from... I also think that the distance from the proposed doors to the new door that'll be on the back of the house is not that great. And, and I do think it would compromise the integrity of the character of this house to change those windows to doors. So the other minor thing in just looking at it, looks like the dining room's less than 10 feet wide with three-foot doors swinging into it, make it awfully hard to have a table, chairs and make that work. But, but that's not our purview to, to review that. So, so I'll stick with adherence to the guidelines as far as the justification. And with respect to 2206 9th Avenue South, I move for approval of the proposed addition with staff conditions.
There's a motion by the Vice Chair. Second? Second in by Commissioner Mahaw. All in favor? Seeing none opposed? That motion passes. Thank you, applicant.
All right, then next is 1310 Lilian Street. This is a request to construct infill in an outbuilding at 1310 Lilian Street. The existing house on the lot was constructed around 1946, which was later for this part of the neighborhood, so is non-contributing. Staff issued a demolition permit in February 2023 to demolish the house. Just some background on this block. The historic character on this section of Lilian Street is not as well-defined as on other blocks of Lilian Street. There aren't any contributing houses on the block. Adjacent blocks of Bosco Bell and Fatherland Street are primarily one and one-and-a-half-story historic houses. There have been several recent infill projects approved by this commission on this block, and those have been one and a half-story. So as well as the, yeah, the 1200 block of Lilian Street. So as proposed, the infill does meet all base zoning setbacks. The infill is one and a half stories at the front with height scale and detailing. That meets the design guidelines and can be appropriate for the context. Here are photos of the subject property, which is on the far right, as well as non-contributing houses to the left. Here are some additional photos of the 1200 to 1300 blocks of Lilian Street. All houses shown here are previously approved infill. The proposed outbuilding meets all of the design guidelines for, for outbuildings. And in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the conditions set forth in the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions? Okay. Applicant? Okay, seeing none? Open public hearing? And close public hearing?
Madam Chairman, with respect to 1310 Lilian Street, I move for approval with staff conditions.
Vice Chair has made a motion. Second by Commissioner Keshen. Is that right? Yes, I thought, made sure I heard that voice right. Okay, all in favor of the motion? Okay. Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you. Okay, I think we have.
If you could just give me a minute to switch slides over, okay? Just one second.
Sure.
Give me a few minutes for tech.
Thank you. For the lady who has been waiting, we will be hearing that one next. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, 1503 Dallas, sorry. Is a pre-1914 brick folk Victorian house that contributes to the historic character of Belmont Hillsborough. The applicant is proposing a side addition, a rear addition, and an outbuilding. The outbuilding is approved to be five feet, or is proposed to be five feet from the rear property line, which meets the design guidelines, and vehicular access is via the alley. The outbuilding is situated just 13 feet, 5 inches from the back of the proposed addition, which is less than the 20 feet typically required. Staff finds that this reduced distance between the two structures is appropriate because this lot is unusually shallow and about 130 feet deep. The commission has approved reduced distances between structures on similar lots in the past. Staff therefore finds that the proposed distance of approximately 13 feet meets the design guidelines. The applicant proposes to alter a front window opening in the gable field. The existing window opening is not original to the house, as seen in the circa 1968 photo. It's not clear if the photo, the 1968 photo is also, is original or not. Staff finds that the demolition of the existing nonhistoric window opening meets the design guidelines and that the proposed new window opening is in keeping with the overall scale of the historic house and its fenestration, fenestration pattern. The proposed new opening is similar to other openings on similar historic houses in the neighborhood. Here is the front facade where you can see the proposed side addition. The side addition does meet all the design guidelines for side additions. You see their dormers in the back. Those are actually on the additional portion, not on the historic roof. Here is the right side facade. And here is the left side facade. Here is the rear facade. And here are the roof plans and floor plans for the garage. Just a reminder that our commission does not review interior layout. The codes department will look at the interior layout to ensure that they meet the requirements for, for daddies. And here are the proposed elevations. The proposed outbuilding does meet all the design guidelines in terms of footprint, eve height, ridge height, materials, roof form, et cetera. So I think I forgot, sorry to add in the recommendation, sorry about that, but we are recommending approval with pretty much our standard conditions. But since it's not on the screen, I will read them out. That assuring plan be reviewed prior to permitting, partial demolition be accomplished manually and not began until partial demolition and assuring plan be approved, and the building has been shored. MHCC approve all windows and doors of the roof shingle color, and that we approve the location of the HVAC unit. With these conditions, staff finds that the proposed addition and outbuilding meets the design guidelines for the Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood conservation zoning overlay. I'm happy to answer any questions. The architect is here, and then there is public comment.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa. Michael Ward with Allard Ward Architects. This is a really, really sweet brick house. It's been really, really well-maintained, and we're trying to do, be very soft about how we sort of touch it. So the heated sort of square footage addition is really just sort of a one-story lean-to thing that was on the back. The foundation appears to be original. So we're just sort of reworking that back section with a new roof line on top of the original foundation. The only thing, and we're adding that little bump on the side, and we're adding a screen porch on the back. That's really what pushes us a little bit closer to the day do, is the screen porch that was added on the rear. And that was sort of the first thing we did, knowing it was a shallow lot. We sat down with Melissa first to sort of talk through, you know, how the little side addition would work and what the minimum would be for her garage day do, which was something very important to the, to the owner. And then we, obviously, given that we were tight, we kept our five-foot rear garage setback like all the other neighbors have. We did put in an 18-foot garage door to sort of make getting in and out of that garage easier. But it is pretty much setback in a typical sort of location with the rest of the garages on Dallas. I'm happy to answer any additional questions you might have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Anyone? Any other questions for applicant? All right. Open public hearing?
Hi, my name is Helen Cornblum. I'm a couple of houses down on Paris Avenue, sharing the alley. And I guess I heard a few key words like shallow lots and making exceptions due to shallow lots. And I think Paris Avenue to the alley is probably one of the shallowest sort of strips in that whole Belmont Hillsborough area. Anyway, I guess my questions have to do with, I mean, one other thing is, I'm here really on behalf of protection of the rights of the alley and, and of people who use the alley, including, you know, all the municipal workers. So I guess my question is, this five-foot is an easement, right? If, a lot of people now, especially 1502 and 1504, Paris, which is right opposite the house in question, they have built these daddies and garages, and they are accessed from the street. So these are now being built, and this is exactly in this position what we're talking about, right up to the alley itself. And in fact, at 1502, this was about eight months ago, the workers put out, you know, orange traffic cones. They literally drilled into the material of the alley at a 90-degree angle, you know, into this. I mean, there's no easement. It was, and in fact, it looks like they kind of dug further and then put dirt there to make it look like there was an easement. Anyway, just, just to remind you of your timing. Okay, sorry. Anyway, I'm concerned the two houses opposite where this garage is going to be, and there's, I gather, a pool, a poolhouse and an apartment that's going to be located at this Dallas property, that there are buildings right at the alley with zero easement right now. And I'm afraid if, if, if what's being built coming up is not respected, that, then that's going to really narrow the alley significantly, and it's already very narrow. So that's really, I sent Ms. Bolduc photos of, of my observations. And anyway, so I guess just to remind you all that it's not just the lots you're approving. It's, it creates an environment and a situation that can cause problems.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I appreciate you being here and waiting till the end of the meeting. Okay, close public hearing?
Ms. Cornblum, we, we appreciate your defending the alley, the rights of the alley, and, and your interest in this project and the public process. You know, this is a beautiful little home, and it's a modest addition, well-designed. I think that, you know, it's the kind of thing we'd like to see more of in, in this preservation work. The, the garage itself is shown as five feet off of the property line, not the alley, but the property line. And then there's an indicator on the drawing that shows EOP, which I assume is edge of pavement. It looks like it's another two feet beyond that. So, so it looks to me like, from what I can see from these drawings, that face of the building will be approximately seven feet from the paved alley, which I think is an appropriate distance. Now, the overhang can extend into that a bit, but that probably won't be more than a foot and a half or so. So it's a, so I think that, you know, it's a well-designed project. I support the staff recommendation on this, feel like it's appropriate.
Other comments?
I agree with Vice Chair because we are very, you know, concerned about alley. That's why we do have five-foot setback. And sometimes people come and ask for reducing the setback, but we are very adamant about safety concern at five-foot setback from the property line. So I think this design meet every single requirement and guideline. So I do understand a neighbor's concern, but I think it follow every single guideline, including five-foot setback for the safety of the vehicular access. So therefore, I'm with Vice Chair, I support staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments or motion?
Madam Chairman, with respect to 1503 Dallas Avenue, I move for approval with staff conditions.
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Price. All in favor? Seeing none opposed? That motion passes. Thank you again. Appreciate you being here. It's always good to have community input, so thank you. All right. Robin, I think it's for you.
Someone screwed up. We, no, it's fine. We just have a very simple suggestion for revision to the rules of order, and that is to add to the list of projects that could be administratively approved, a partial demolition of historic siding where replacement meets the design guidelines. And so we recommend approval of that revision.
Any discussion, Commissioners? Okay, is there a motion? Oh, yeah.
No, because we didn't believe that that did meet the guidelines, so we would have brought it to you.
Anything else? Okay. Motion?
I move that we approve the change in rules regarding to siding that Robin proposes.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Keshen. All in favor? Okay. That motion passes. Okay, I just have one question as chair. So do you all, this is a question for you to consider. Do, do you want to continue doing demo walkthroughs? Okay. We had a couple of meetings there, and, and that's probably why I asked. Sure.
There was a demo walkthrough that we did a while back. And it seemed like it was dangerous for us to be in there. And I think that if we are going to, I do agree with seeing the, the property in the demos, but if there is anything as far as insect infestation or, or, or anything that could possibly harm us, I would like to have a heads-up notice to wear a mask or wear different kinds of shoes.
Yeah.
I, I agree, and I, I just, I would recommend that you always prepare for that. Because they're usually in poor condition, which is why they're wanting to demo typically. And we haven't always been in ahead of time ourselves to know exactly what kind of condition it's in.
So what would you suggest, other than having a mask and wearing proper shoes?
Do a cover, shoe cover.
Sorry about as far as some of the front head or.
Yeah, hard hat.
And, and use your judgment. If you don't feel comfortable, don't go in.
Right.
You know, we, we do the same thing.
Yeah. Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it should be.
That's the only thing, I was just concerned.
Yeah, absolutely.
Those were good points because we don't, and that's probably something that we don't have a heads-up about sometimes because, you know, we're not seeing that report right away. So whether the condition of the property is really unsafe, particularly this other one that just came up, it was pretty unsafe. Great question. The other thing too, we just want to just remind ourselves that it's always good just to let your RSVP to Robin so that we can, she can gauge whether there's enough of us that can make it. And because we're all valuable time, you know, we, we all are busy in our lives. And also to be considerate to the applicant. If they have a heads-up that, hey, we, you know, our commissioners can't meet you, then please just reserve your time for something else. I think it's just really important for us to be considerate to our applicants as well and to each other. Because in that way, I know that I called them few because I was the only one there, but that doesn't mean, you know, that I won't be. But I think it's, and I don't, I don't vote. So if it's the ones that actually can look at it and have a perspective, then that's a good thing to have. So just a reminder, and also just general housekeeping is that, you know, RSVP to Robin about being here on our meetings. Because, and you might have, you know, an emergency, but then that's, it's absolutely okay. But I think it's considerate for all of us to just remind ourselves to be considerate of each other, so.
It's dangerous, this is dangerous. They did that for a reason because they wanted us to approve the demolition. So we have to be warned.
Mm-hmm. Or no, no rodents or animals that will run after you. Yes.
That was awesome.
And just remind you again, we have, the annual preservation awards is coming Thursday. It'd be nice to have some of our commissioners there. It's 4:30 at the library. So watch out for, for parking if you, because it seems like.
Snakes, huh?
And snakes, and snake. It might be down in the garage. Part of it. It's part of it.
But, you know, it's usually pretty cool, even if it's fully available, so.
Yeah. Commissioners, you were right on today. I mean, I just appreciated all the discussion and how your heads were all in it, and makes my job easier in this little role here. But thank you again. Thank you, staff, for all you do, and, you know, legal for Ann, always keeping us straight. So, yeah, very good. Thank you. Another one bites the dust.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.